Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public joining us here and those watching online. I will now call this November 22nd, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order, which is the final Committee of the Whole Meeting of this calendar year. For those of you who might be joining or watching for the first time, Committee of the Whole Meetings are informational only. This is a time for the entire board to gather and hear about and discuss a particular topic or topics. Tonight's topic is on progress monitoring, the impact of instruction. Just as with the past several months, we will first have the opportunity here first from Central Office staff, then from a collection of principals and school staff, and then end with time for board member discussions and questions. Clerk Ins, will you please call the roll for the record?
Director Arneson?
Here.
Director Alameen? Director Ali?
Here.
Director Sorio?
Here.
Director Ins is here, Director Jordan?
Here.
Director Booker?
Here.
Director Caprini?
Present.
Student Representative Austin?
Here.
Student Representative Wesson?
Here.
Chair Ellison?
Here, thank you. Please let the record reflect that Director Alameen is traveling this week and is not able to join us here tonight. We'll move right to our sole agenda items so we can hear from staff here. Interim Superintendent Cox, please go ahead.
Chair Ellison, directors, it's just a pleasure to be in front of you tonight again with another Committee of the Whole. I have to say, this is probably my favorite topic with my special education background, but very excited to hear at Central Office what we're doing with progress monitoring and then hear how it's playing out at our schools. I just want to take a moment, in case I don't get to, to thank all the staff that are here today to share what's happening in either their departments or their schools with us tonight. So I will let Executive Director Hunter start us off.
Good evening, Director Ellison, Interim Superintendent Cox, members of the board. Yes, I think I maybe need to be closer to my mic. Good evening all, and thank you for the opportunity to have a brief conversation from the school improvement perspective about progress monitoring of instruction. So one of the things that we have been trying to be more intentional about is making connections directly to the progress for students that we are seeking to change through our actions with adults. So last week, only a week ago today, we shared the fall data for our fall Fast Bridge assessments and our other fall screeners. And so these are the measures that we are looking at when we think about why we want to implement things like professional learning communities, et cetera. So for the first time tonight, I'm going to be sharing an update related to the look fours. So in other words, the things that we are asking to be true across all schools in the area of school improvement. So those are in the areas of professional learning communities, which are those spaces that we want to make sure that all teachers have to work with their peers, to use student data, to dig in and determine what changes they need to make to better meet students' needs. Instructional leadership teams should be leading that work at the school level, and then the document where they show their work is their school improvement plan. So as a, oops, help me out Kelly. As a school improvement team, we have set some quarterly expectations that we have for schools that we support through our team's direct support at schools and then through professional development once a month. So one of the things that we're looking at is wanting to make sure that, again, like I said, that all teachers have access to that time and space to work with their peers. And the first step in that process is to make sure that school leaders know who those folks are in their buildings who are going to lead those spaces, that they have time set aside. You know, out of all of the things that need to happen in a school in a week, in a month, for professional learning communities to happen, and then making sure that there's a really intentional connection between that work and how we show our work, which is in that school improvement plan. So having, you know, for all practical purposes, a tab. So it's a Google Doc, making sure there's a tab for each PLC to show how they're monitoring student progress. So in the first one, we're at 93% of our schools complete. I won't go through every one of the numbers, but what I want to show is that really at the top of this page is sort of the beginning of year expectations. And then we're working down to what we've talked about quite a few times is that we really want that space to be weekly, right? So that it's a regular thing that teachers can engage in each week. And right now, we're at 74% of our schools have committed to weekly PLCs. Some of the things that take space up in PLC time that we're working together with academics is to make sure that the work in supporting our new math curriculum is considered a part of that work, right? So when grade level teams are engaging in PD related to our bridges and number corner math curriculum, that's their PLC cycle for that week because it is planning for instruction. The next area that I'm going to dig into is instructional leadership team look fours. So 97% of our schools are at, the calendar of ILT meetings is set for the year. Again, that sort of started out at the beginning of the year as our sort of first bar. And then the end goal for quarter one was that all SIP goals and strategies are posted on schools' websites by the end of October. The 74% does not mean that the other 26% don't have a SIP. We need to work with schools to just make sure that it gets linked on their website. But one of the things that I think I talked about a few months ago is that really important connection to families and stakeholders and school communities having access to be able to see the work that schools are doing to try to improve so that they're meeting more students' needs in an effort to meet all students' needs. So being able to, as a parent or a caregiver, see what that work is that's being done is really important to us. So the step that I want to offer, because a good question for me might be, so what are we doing, right, because we're not at 100%? So our next step as a school improvement team is to reach out through the folks that support schools, so school improvement specialists, to help schools get to complete with all of these tasks. And then if there's a need for additional support, we partner with our associate superintendent team. And we also have some space that we may offer to leaders in our PD for next month to make sure that there is a space and time to finish up this work in order to make sure we're on track for the next round of checking in, which this, a lot of this is structures and systems. So what I would want you all to want from us in our next reports is, so then how do we know whether it's working? And that's something that we'll be doing in partnership with academics. And so what we would want to see is if, as we've said, PLCs are really important for movement in student achievement, then we should start to see that, right? So we should start to see a correlation between strong PLCs and improvements in academic achievement. So I wanted to show a few examples, just to make this really tangibly real for members of our community and for you all as our board. So these are examples of SIP goals on the left, and then the paired strategy that the school has written and is, has posted on their website in an elementary. And then I believe the next one is in a K8, and then in one of our high schools. So I wanted to, again, show a few examples. So for example, in one of our elementaries that was identified for underserving their African-American students, they then, through the targeted needs analysis process thus far, they dug into their data. They determined that they wanted to set a specific goal for their African-American students on the Fast A reading. And then their strategy in order to implement that change for students is staff collaboration through PLCs, grade level collab time within a multi-tiered systems of support framework. So making sure that students get what they need and regularly progress monitoring. In another one of our schools, you'll see that the school was identified for underserving their students who receive special education services. So they do have a specific goal related to students receiving those services, and it's specific to IEP goals, right? So making sure that those goals that have been set for each individual student, that they are progress monitoring and holding themselves accountable for ensuring that the students are moving forward. And then another example that I wanted to share related to long-term English learners is that they, the school is working towards exiting EL students based on their access results. So that's that assessment we do in the winter of each year that determines whether we're meeting students receiving EL services' needs. And in that case, they're working on using short and long-term planning with a focus on language production. That's in one of our high schools. I'm going to hand it to Executive Director Derek Francis.
Good afternoon. I want to say hi, welcome again to directors. Let's do it. So I wanted to, I wanted to pull up, just reviewing the goals. This is what we're working towards. So we're taking steps towards this goal area for our students in Strategic Plan Two. And as you take a look at those, be mindful of our language in our strategic plan about being mindful of our students from diverse backgrounds. We're affirming our students and families that are, have been historically marginalized. And so you see that in this language, and this is what we're working towards in our strategic plan. And so when I'm sharing a few, some of the information coming up, the data, our goals is around our look fours is to make sure that we have some goals and some strategies moving in the direction of making sure that we have some ways to identify how we're reaching those goals. And so some of the key, one of the key quarter one goals is having a plan, actually a school climate goal. So having that be your strategy and entering in that strategy. And so you see there, we have asked our schools to do that, and we have about, if you look at the percentage, there's 78%. We've done a good start in having our educators, our district leaders, share around how they're recording their school improvement goals, their climate goals. Next you see there is looking at how are we sharing that information with the community? So it's important that we plan our goal, but also be mindful of how we're sharing that information with the community. And then the last goal on there, at the top there is being proactive around building relationships. And so being mindful that climate goals, look fours, this is something historically that hasn't been done. This is new. And so we're being mindful of how we're sharing this information and also delivering it and working with our building leaders. And so some of the things that we've noticed as a team, as Equity and School Climate Team, is how are we going to be mindful of raising the percentages that we see here? And so while I share about that, our strategies begin with making sure we're clearing our language when we're communicating with schools and being mindful when we say what's a proactive activity to help give an idea of what those are. So having more clear language around that, what that is. And then also providing support, as was mentioned, with connecting with our associates. So sharing with our associates that we want to come in collaboration and make sure we're supporting schools with sharing out their goals to the school, community, and families. And then come alongside and providing professional development in December to our school leaders who need support with making sure that they're knowing what strategies they can use to connect with students and families and let them know about the goals that they have. And so again, we know schools have been working on and have these goals, but we want to be sure that they're implementing it and sharing it with the community. And the previous slide, the first slide, we talked about the goals that we're working towards. And I shared a few of the progress around how it's been going with proactive relationship building and sharing the events, the goals with the community members and families. And so we know that when you talk about being a welcoming, inclusive community, we know that our schools have been doing this more and being more visible and intentional throughout this school year. And so I wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like and sounds like and feels like. Some of you may have seen some of these different events going on throughout our community. So I wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like through quarter one of the school year of supporting our students and families to be more inclusive and welcoming. So you'll see that we do ongoing throughout our district. You'll see us supporting events such as Spirit Day, which was held last month. And that was a space to make sure that we're intentionally grounding our students and community members in a space to be welcoming and inclusive to our LGBTQ plus community. Also, you'll see events that we host here at Davis Center, but also at our different school sites, as you can see up there. And so be mindful that these opportunities to create spaces for students and families to feel welcomed in schools are ongoing, and we're going to make sure that we're continuing to show in our look fours and different strategies throughout the upcoming months how we're making sure we're connecting with students and families. So I'm going to pass it along.
Good evening, Director Ellison and board members, people of the public who are watching this evening. I will actually be speaking very quickly, not quickly in pace, but as in short. So you won't be able to hear all the passion that apparently I demonstrated at the last meeting. I got a lot of feedback about that. But I do want to thank all of you board members and those in the public who did come to our schools last week for the American Indian Family Involvement Week. It was great to see all of you there and also just to be a part of all the events that were happening, both virtually and in person. So thank you all for those of you who were able to join. Along that lines, as we begin the Committee of the Whole this evening, I do want to take a moment to remind everyone in this room and those in the public of MPS's ongoing commitment to educate ourselves of American Indian people experiences past and present. Coming up here in a few days is where Americans celebrate a holiday called Thanksgiving. Although many use this federal holiday as a vacation time, time to spend with family, it's important to note that this day to American Indian people is a day of remembrance of loss, tragedy, and genocide. Throughout history and even today, oppressive systems have continued to push American Indians to the brink of invisibility, and it's our duty, is our obligation, to push back on these very systems, including our system of public education. As we head into the end of this week, I encourage those in this room and those listening to take some time to research American Indian past and present current day contributions as American Indians are still here, they are not of something in the past, and commit to action to uplift and promote our American Indian community. More information and resources can be found on Minneapolis Public Schools' American Indian Education website. And then also just commit and dedicate yourselves to be individuals who are striving to create a space, to be, to create a space and visibility and education of the true history and importance of accurate narratives. And with that, I'm going to pass it along to Dr. Jodi Henderson, who will do the next slide, and then she'll pass it to Dr. Decca Hussein and then Mohit Dine. So just introducing them now as the microphone gets passed. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot I had another slide. Just got excited there. Okay, so I just wanted to review quickly what we've been going through since August in terms of the cadence of a school year, of how a school operates in terms of academics. So you really set your rituals and routines in August. You're really looking at culturally responsive and sustaining curriculum in September to set out the year. And then really looking at your quality instruction, making sure that that is being planned and implemented. And now we're here in November where we have our screeners back and a lot of our fall assessments. So now it's progress monitoring. So what, again, where are students scoring? How are they, how are we meeting the needs of those who need additional support? And then how are we accelerating or providing extensions for those who need that? So just as a reminder, all MPS students are general education students first, all students, right? So that's why we have this bar across the top. But I did want to take some time tonight to highlight special education and English learner as those, all those departments and students receiving those services also have increased progress monitoring. So I did want to highlight how that is seen in the classrooms and in our schools. And now I will pass the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Ellison, Interim Superintendent Cox, members of the board, student representatives, and the MPS community. I'm really excited to be here, I'm a touch nervous. So I'm going to begin talking about progress monitoring at the individual student level. So I'm going to first talk about what's in the second column on the slide, and that's essentially monitoring student progress. So I'm going to make a distinction. So with monitoring student progress, teachers monitor student progress throughout the day on an almost continuous minute-by-minute basis. Monitoring student progress can be as simple as a quick formative assessment where the students respond on a whiteboard, which really helps make the learning more visible to the teacher and so that the teacher can also adjust instruction just right in that moment. Other examples include observations or end-of-unit assessments. And again, monitoring student progress is daily and ongoing. So within an MTSS framework, the concept of progress monitoring holds specific meaning. Progress monitoring utilizes specific measurement tools and procedures that will reflect the changes in student performance over time. Progress monitoring is just one piece of data that provides information as to whether or not an intervention is effective in closing the gap between the student's current performance and then the student's expected performance. The measurements are consistent, usually brief, frequent, specific, and sensitive to instructional changes over time. Examples would include oral reading fluency or phonemic segmentation fluency. And with that, I will hand it off to Executive Director of Special Education, Decca Hussein.
The mic is heavy, it's just me being nervous. Good evening, Chair Ellison, Interim Superintendent Cox, members of the board, student representative, and MPS community. Progress monitoring is very important and required in special education specifically. Each student who receives special education services needs progress monitoring for each goal that is addressed in the IEP. To monitor the goal, whether it's academic, functional skill, or related service, or SCL, we need to make sure that we are using data to make data-driven instruction decisions. And the frequency of the progress monitor should be clearly stated in the IEP and should state who is responsible. And usually within our district, it's the special education teacher or the case manager. All students pre-K through 12th grade receiving special education services should also receive all the district progress monitoring, including screeners, diagnostic tests, FAST, benchmark, Advance, and so forth. Most of the district assessments can be done by either general education teacher or special education teacher. Examples of monitoring progress include reading screener, diagnostic, CBM, which information that can be obtained is whether a student is behind in their progress mon, I mean, in their goals. So our students take evaluations every three years, and sometimes a student may have regressed or has achieved the goal. So I believe in using data and, because data gives us objective decisions rather than being subjective. So we rely on the outcome of the data. Student may move into intensive literacy intervention class in special education. We also use the informal data, as Jodi talked about, to see if a student is on task or to see if they're engaged, and engagement may improve, and sometimes it may not. We usually use BIB to see if a student is struggling. And our directors and I are looking at the FAST data. We just got a data, and we're using the data to partner with principals to make sure that all the students that are identified as high-risk are also, if a student is identified high-risk for reading or math, we will work with that team to make sure that student has the reading goal specific to address their skill gap and so forth for math if they're identified as high-risk. We also use the data to see if a student is attending 90% of the time. They should not be on the high-risk. With that, I will pass the mic to Mohit Dine.
Chair Ellison, Interim Superintendent Cox, Board Directors, Student Representative. Assalamualaikum. Buonasnotes. Niyong. Good evening. My name is Mohit Dine Warfa, and I'm the Executive Director for the Multilingual Department and the Magnet Programs here at the district. And as Dr. Ferring mentioned, English learners, students receiving English learner services are general students first. So their learning, the classroom teacher, the whole school staff is responsible for their learning as just another student. What the ESL teachers do is that they give extra services in learning English. So depending on a student's level of English language proficiency as determined by the WIDER levels, supported either through the regular classroom where the ESL teacher is coming in to support and co-teach with the classroom teacher, or in some cases standalone classroom to have direct English language instructions for them. With regard to progress monitoring, students receiving English language learner services, we use the Common Language Assessments, which are 15- to 20-minute formative assessments, administered three times during the year, so in the fall, winter, and the spring. Before our teachers developed these Common Language Assessments, we really just relied on the one-year access testing, which is done in the winter. And you can really not do much with just a one-time window of the student's language proficiency. So our ESL teachers really have gone far in developing these assessments to monitor the student's language growth three times during the year. These assessments measure EL proficiency in areas of ORSE, which is listening and speaking, and in literacy, which is reading and writing. And the purpose of this assessment is to provide EL teachers with the data that they need to help to monitor students' language growth and to provide updates to families on the student's language growth and the level they can go to next. And then it also helps plan for future instruction and differentiation in the classroom. Each piece of this assessment has a central language function or feature that it's assessing. For example, the language of either comparing or contrasting. And also we support the content area of that particular classroom. So this CLA is really, as I said, developed by our ESL teachers. And the WIDER Consortium that Minnesota is a member of is so impressed with the assessment we developed that they are putting it among the resources that will be provided to other school districts. And they're going to be sending that bulletin soon. I want to thank Christine Kennedy, who helped put that together. We developed this framework and instructional assessment and support book for our teachers. So every ESL teacher in the classroom has this book, and this is what the WIDER Consortium will be referencing to other districts as well. Thank you so much for your time today. And with that, I will transition to our school leaders, who will be coming to present more to you.
So Lisa, we are timing each of the groups to see which one transitions the best. But not bad, November, not bad. Dr. Walker, I'll let you take it away.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair Ellison, good evening, directors. Good evening to Interim Superintendent Cox and student reps Austin and Wesson. Thank you all for being here, I appreciate that. My name is Michael Walker, I'm one of the Associate Superintendents, and I work with the high school portfolio. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of the other associates to really introduce you all to these amazing school leaders who include principals and teachers. And they're here to really share about how they are progress monitoring the impact of instruction in their school sites. instruction in their school sites or in their classrooms directly. And so they're going to be kind of focusing around the four areas of literacy, math, school improvement, as well as equity in school climate. And so this is all in the effort for us to achieve our goal of the strategic plan. And so this is really important for us in our work. So tonight, we're going to get started with Burrows, and I'll let them take it over.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone for welcoming us and inviting us to present to you tonight. My name is Maggie Vecchio Smith, and I'm the Principal at Burrows. We are very excited to be part of the work of the Science of Reading initiatives that are going on in our district right now. Last year, we became one of the schools involved in the Groves Literacy Partnership. Groves roughly our 30-minute lessons in our kindergarten through third-grade classrooms that focus on phonics, phonemic awareness, and handwriting. Our teachers are here today. I have Susan Buckholz, one of our first-grade teachers, and Julie Murray-Ziegler, our K-2 TOSA, and they're here to talk about progress monitoring within our Groves framework.
So in Groves, the materials in first through third grade start with a beginning-of-the-year assessment. In first grade, a key part of this is the reading and spelling of CVC words or consonant-vowel consonant words. For example, words like cat or rug. They are decodable if students know their letter sounds. Having a solid foundation in reading and spelling of CVC words leads to high levels of literacy achievement as students get older.
So we use the FAST bridge early reading assessment in first grade each fall, winter, and spring. And at Burrows, we compare our FAST data with our Fall Groves data. This information informs our Fall Whole Group instruction, as well as our formation of small groups and students that we refer to the Minnesota Reading Core Program for one-on-one We're using FAST bridge tools for all of our progress monitoring and literacy from grades one through five. In first grade, we're using the FAST nonsense words assessment. Every two weeks in first grade, all students who receive extra support through small groups or Minnesota Reading Core tutoring are progress monitored using the FAST bridge nonsense words assessment. For our students in grades two through five, all students who receive small group support in literacy are progress monitored every two weeks using the FAST CBM, which is a fluency assessment. This is the same assessment given to all second and third graders three times a year as part of our Groves implementation.
In the classroom each week, the Groves curriculum includes a Day Five Formative Assessment, which helps us to inform our upcoming instruction. At Weeks Six, Fourteen, Twenty-four, and at the end of the year, the same assessments are given so that we can continually monitor progress of all of the students and change groups when needed.
We are also working to align our special education programming and assessment with what we're doing in the rest of the building through our MTSS program. So our special education teachers are also starting to work with our Groves Coach and have access to the Groves Intervention Resources. They were actually using the FAST CBMs, which if you look up there, that's that blue and yellow and pink graph. So one of our special education resource teachers started using that a number of years ago to track students' oral reading fluency, which even though it's not a comprehension assessment, it predicts our students' comprehension growth. So we're using that now across the building so that we can track students before they're in special education, when they receive special education, and hopefully when they can exit the program and throughout our other interventions. All right, that's Groves.
So I'm Liza Anderson, I'm the interim principal at Henry High School, and I'm happy to be here with Laura Bremseth and Erin Kazuki, one of our co-teaching teams. And we're here to talk about co-teaching and how we progress monitor and adjust our instruction based on that. So at Henry High School, we actually started our co-teaching model because we realized that our students with special education services that were transitioning from pull-out services to general education classrooms were not being successful. Oftentimes, we found that they had not had access to the standards in the pull-out classes, and we weren't having successful transitions when they were in a general education classroom, so if their services were decreased. So if you want to go to the next slide. And so one of the things, we also saw that they weren't having access to rigorous coursework. And so we really found that we've brought bringing the co-teachers together helped to bridge those gaps, and it's transformed some of our teaching experiences. So if you can go to the next slide. Originally, when we started co-teaching, we really kind of threw co-teaching in where we had pockets of students, and we found that that really wasn't very successful. So we had some pockets of success, but we weren't seeing great success. So we really focused on the co-teaching pairs and looking at our students' goals. So our students' goals are specific IEP goals, and where those goals could be met, and finding the right pairs to work together. And then we, same thing with our EL services, we really targeted our EL co-teaching in Science and Social Studies, where we found our students with EL services were having the biggest struggles in general education. And so Erin and Laura are going to talk a little bit about how that they work together to do that. We're really proud to say, like this year, we actually have a TRITOT class that is general education, students with IEPs and students with EL services. And it's really exciting to see that work together with the TRITOT. It's something that we've been talking about for quite a while, and this is the first year we're going to do it. So Laura and Erin are going to talk a little bit about how they work together and progress monitor to increase student achievement in those settings.
Thanks, Liza. Okay, yeah, so my name is Laura, my pronouns are she/her/hers, and I am a special education teacher, and I have co-taught with Erin.
Yep, no, we're good, we're good, we're good. My pronouns are he/him. We've taught together, this is our seventh year together co-teaching, which is pretty remarkable.
Something that I, when I learned about the co-teaching model when I started working here, I felt that it was really, really important. However, it wasn't really focused on, we weren't given the time, there wasn't the time that was needed for co-teaching. It felt just like there was an additional behavior support in the classroom, which is fine, and we need that sometimes. However, the, we have since, so like this year, we removed a special education math classroom and we added a third co-taught classroom because we believe in an actual least restrictive environment for our students. And so we're asking teachers to meet the needs of the students in the spaces and not asking the students to conform to the standards in the general education classroom. And that is why we're seeing success. I mean, I'm speaking for Erin, but we are, our progress monitoring looks a lot like really asking the students also what their goals are for themselves in the classroom space.
Yeah, with that, we've been recently actually developing self-monitoring as well, where we want them to see their own growth. What do you know about this topic before we start? And make it a tangible data point that we can track. And then after, after we do the topic, hey, where do you grade yourself on this? And can you reflect on, you know, perhaps what could you teach a peer? Or, yeah, I mean, where is your growth? What did you gain?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, if you want to have students feel successful in a classroom and make success on like the FAST bridge or the easy CBMs, they have to see themselves as being successful in the classroom, and they have to take ownership of their learning as well. And I think the way that we're doing that in our co-teaching model is empowering students to be in the classroom and to understand, like the students need to understand at the high school level what the progress monitoring is and why they're doing it. And I think the amount of time, just kind of talking about the time, I know we have to pass it on, pass the mic, but the amount of time that Erin and I spend, we meet every single day to collaborate. And that is how we're able to look at student data, differentiate instruction, and understand that, you know, how Erin can understand the IEP goals is because we have that time to work together and look at our content standards. And then scale it.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, like scale it to where the students are at and different, like actually differentiate for them.
Common priorities.
Right, right.
All right.
So I know you saw some of the challenges and rewards on the slides. I think one of the biggest pieces is one of, is some of the quotes that you have from students and staff, and I'll let you read those pieces on your own. But I think one of the biggest ones is from Mr. Pelini, who's one of our TRITOT teachers, is how he had really became stagnant, in his own words, in his teaching practices, and that working with a co-teacher, he sees his students a new lens, he sees their needs, he scaffolds differently, and he just approaches teaching and instruction very differently. And then I'd just encourage you, take some time to look at the student quotes, because I think it really talks to what that, what that setting and the co-teaching setting means for them, so.
One, I'm Mariel Talatalla, I am a DCD Sped Teacher in HIA.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ramal Cooper, and I am a Special Education Assistant at the Monk International Academy.
Okay, so tonight, we are so proud to present to you how we do our collaborative model for Sped and implementing functional phonics for K-2-2, and the role as a Sped Teacher and progress monitoring.
So as you can see in the slide up here, I'm in the slide working with some of the kids, some of the students. I have three students in this classroom that we work one-on-one with. I do one-on-one with each child, give a few minutes for each child, make sure they are following the collaborative teaching model, and that's it on the slide.
So last year, DCD program is, students stay in DCD classroom. But this year, we, this is our first year to start a collaboration or inclusion model with Gen Ed teachers. So there, once a week, we have our Functional Phonics Coach, Ms. Nancy. She comes to coach us and models our new Functional Phonics. And also, she comes to coach us in PLC and help us how to gather data using the Functional Phonics. Also, what is happening in the Gen Ed classroom, we divide students. So the Gen Ed teacher has her own class. She does Functional Phonics according to the level of her students. And I have my own students, I have my own group with the help of the Special Education So that is me teaching for students in first grade. I have two DCD students and the other two DD students. So I am kind of modifying the Functional Phonics program using the core board for, to communicate with my students. Two of them are nonverbal, and I'm also using the handwriting without tears that helps our students remember more and how to write the letters properly, how it looks like. And also, we are using the alphabetical arc that is from Functional Phonics, so the kids can remember where they can find the letters. And also, our, there is the Sped Assistant, he's helping academically and behaviorally supporting the students. And we use, for progress monitoring, we use the data log from IEP, and we also use the data tracker for Functional Phonics. So every week, we assess students where they're at, and then after that assessment, Sped teachers collaborate with the Gen Ed teachers, and then talk about what to do next, what to do next to those students who excelled and those students who are behind. And I think that's it, our snapshot for how to integrate students to provide access to core instructions with our new plan. Thank you.
Okay, next. I have to clear my throat, I've had that cold that lasts forever, and I'm not sick anymore, but when I sit still, I cough. I'm Lisa Pavelak from Lucy Laney. And I struggled a little bit with what to talk to you about, because I didn't want it to be redundant and be the same. So I'm doing it a little, a little differently than some of our colleagues, but I want to talk you briefly through how we progress monitor student engagement at Laney. And it's a little bit less tangible in some ways, but just, just as important. So we have a weekly student support meeting. We jokingly call ourselves the Misfits, so all the staff that don't belong to an instructional grade-level team. But every Monday morning, we get together, it's myself, our Assistant Principal, our school social worker, our school counselor, our building-wide SEA, our school psychologist, our mental health provider, we have Canvas Health at Laney, will join us, our transportation coordinator comes, and our student support specialist. And it's very simple, but really deep for us, and it's really transformed the way that we can respond to student needs. But we just have two agenda items. We ask, are the students attending? And are they engaged in their classes? So our data every week that we look at is student attendance, and we'll take different spins on it based on the time of year, or what, where the kids are at, or what's needed. So we might look at, okay, in the last two weeks, who's been absent unexcused, and how do we intervene, and we divide up? Or we might look at, okay, overall, who needs some deeper interventions? Who, who needs something different, basically? And then with engagement, we look at, we try not to use the word behavior too much, but we look at our student referrals, both on the bus and in school. And we also look at different home situations, which is a little bit harder to quantify, but we start with the data, and then we talk through individual student needs. We talk through, okay, who can intervene here, who can intervene here, who has a relationship with this family? And then we broaden out. So we look for hotspots by classroom, hotspots by grade level, hotspots by area of the building, and then we broaden our conversation out to, okay, what systems can we change? So we have individual students that we talk through and develop interventions for, and then we broaden it back out. So one thing that we've noticed and have been struggling with a little bit this year is our students who have been identified as homeless or highly mobile. So at this time of the year last year, 10% of our students had been identified as homeless or highly mobile, and this year, we're sitting at 19%, which is almost double. And I've been asking around, and that's not unique. It's not unique to Lucy Laney, it's an issue in the whole city of Minneapolis, and really the metro area and the state and other cities too. But it's something that we've been grappling through, and we're really blessed. Before some of this happened, the city of Minneapolis funded a social worker on special assignment to deepen the stable home, stable schools work. And Laney was chosen as the pilot site. So we have a rock star school social worker, who's been our school social worker for the last 10 years, Sarah Olson, laser-focused on our families that are experiencing housing instability. And I don't know how we would be able to meet some of the needs that we have without her. And so I don't really know how other schools are able to do it. And so you guys who know me know that I'll never miss an opportunity to make an ask, if there is one. And so this, this would be it. Like, if I was a school board member, one lens I feel like I'd probably think through is like, okay, well, how can I help with that? Because that's, that's the role and that's the job. And I would say, if we're thinking about a double, if not more, percentage of our families that are struggling with housing instability, we could and can, and I will, and maybe you could commit with me, to using our influence to try to increase the amount of time that our families experiencing this can stay stable. So right now, with the McKinney-Vento Act, we're able to provide transportation and to help kids stay grounded in their homeschool just for the remainder of the school year. But with all the flux that's happening, and I know I'm not the only person experiencing like families moving so, so much, think it's going to take longer, and maybe we could try to use our influence to either push the city, maybe the stable home, stable schools family could get transportation that's funded through the city for the whole three years, or maybe we could try to push federally to increase that a little bit. But that's my, my plug at the end.
Hi, I'm Angela Evenson, and I'm at Northeast Middle School. I'm the IB Coordinator. And at Northeast, I feel like we are monitoring all the time. And as we monitor our instruction and the impact it has on our students, we demonstrate the various IB learner profiles, traits. And so I'm going to kind of fly through those a little bit. We are knowledgeable, we have been collaborating with Dr. Keeler and our district DPF, Content Area DPFs, to help us align our work with our standards and with the SIP, all the way through, everything we're doing, both vertically and horizontally. We are thinkers, as we have been intentional in our use of the IP Planner to plan our lessons and our activities for our students. We've been using the Avid and WICAR strategies to help us monitor the progress of our students. We are communicating with staff and making We are communicating with staff and making the time to connect with students and families to have academic conversations via text, email, phone, conferencing. If there's somebody in the hall, we're talking to them about their academics, not necessarily their behaviors, it's more about their academics. We are open-minded as we are inviting students and families to share ideas on how we can better engage with them. We are enquirers. We encourage our staff and our students to ask questions and to seek multiple solutions in a variety of ways that leads to them being principled, in that we are presenting lessons and concepts in a variety of ways and asking students to solve problems in a variety of ways for all learners, so that they're not just doing the work, but they're actually learning. We are risk takers. We are using our PD, our PLC and our collab time, which is weekly. During our collab time, we are using the Looking at Student Work protocols to guide and to monitor student work. We are reflective, in that we encourage and support all of the collaboration that we're doing throughout our building and the observation in our classrooms to come from a spirit of reflection to maximize student growth. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Skoronic, the principal at Pillsbury. I have the pleasure of being here tonight with Kylie Christensen, who is one of our instructional leaders at our school and focuses on literacy. We're here tonight to focus on our second graders and tell you about intervention and progress monitoring with them. As you've learned over the past few board meetings, all of our students are given a screener at the beginning of the year. In addition to a reading for our second graders, we also gave a curriculum-based measure to assess their reading fluency. And when students read with less than 90% accuracy on that curriculum-based measure, they were flagged for intervention and given a press phonics assessment. This assessment helped identify gaps in their phonics knowledge. And we use this information, information to place them in an intervention group that focused on the skills that they were missing. This slide here is a screenshot of the spreadsheet we use to identify the students and then see exactly what skills they needed right away to focus on in their intervention group.
So we noticed that there were a large percentage of incoming second graders that needed extra support with reading. And because of this, we collaborated with second grade teachers to structure a literacy block that would maximize the amount of direct instruction that all students would receive. So after a whole group literacy lesson with their homeroom teacher, students throughout the grade spend 80 minutes rotating through stations that are differentiated to address their specific literacy needs. On this side, on this slide, are three examples of individual students' rotation schedules. The independent stations are highlighted in green, while teacher-led small group instruction is highlighted in blue. Looking at student A on the far left, you can see that she's receiving three blocks of small group instruction during this rotation time. She receives EL instruction, Tier 2 intervention, and a guided reading group with her classroom teacher. Each of these groups engages in frequent progress monitoring to assess the development of her skills. And the next slide is an example of the progress monitoring data for one second grade student in a Tier 2 intervention group. At the beginning of this year, the student's press phonics assessment indicated that she needed support with pre-reading skills in phonemic awareness, specifically in her ability to identify ending sounds in a word. As she and other students in this group have become proficient in each new skill, we changed instruction to target the skill on the next, the next skill on the phonics continuum. In this way, we're continuously moving through skills with the goal of achieving grade level fluency by the end of the year. I'm actually really excited to share that this particular student is now able to decode CVC words and as of this afternoon, was able to read a list of 10 CVC words with 70% accuracy. So in about a month, she moved from working on pre-reading skills to actually reading.
That's all because of you, Kylie. So as you, right, and they're teachers, you're right. Using frequent progress monitoring to assess the development of our student's skills has enabled us to identify exactly how to provide the appropriate and differentiated instruction for our students. By keeping such a close eye on their growth, we can ensure that they're consistently challenged.
I'd first like to introduce myself. I've been a special education teacher for almost 30 years. My own two children attended Minneapolis Public Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. I'm also a Northside resident of 15 years. I'd like to first share that my introduction to science teaching was offered to me 15 years ago by the fantastic Gems and Guys Robotics Program, where I have been so lucky to coach kindergarteners with Legos. The Life Skills Special Education Program later at Southwest High School signed me to teach the three-year cycle of science courses, which then challenged me to ask for more resources and equitable science experiences. District support started to happen when I added Ed Graff to my PDP, my PDP team, and he sent personnel from Davis to visit me, creating good trouble with my ask for science to be more inclusive. Fast forward to last year now, I've been assigned to co-teach with two amazing science teachers in both chemistry and the environmental science systems, Mr. Pearson and Ms. Bearden. Southwest currently has five different special education programs. Four are, send students into my co-taught science class. Within the three co-taught science classes, I progress monitored 22 students with IEPs, five which have dual eligibility with EL services. The first key to my best work is building relationships with these students. Progress monitoring is a second key for how I best plan for their success in these co-taught spaces. Each student comes with their unique package of skills and abilities. Observations and progress monitoring capture student information that guides my delivery of how best to engage with each student. Progress captured in classes is collected with the use of several tools and observation methods. The use of the Dino Observation Tool, comparing a unique learner to a gen ed learner with on-task behaviors, individualized instruction with a student to speak of their evidence of what they've learned. Formative assessments collect science learning in the classroom by observation with group work and labs. Monitoring grade book and attendance and observing relationships in the classrooms with peers and instructors. This collection of information is then communicated to the seven different case managers of these science students I support, with documented support action steps I completed and assignment alerts, highlights, and joys through many text messages and emails. Okay, this is my favorite slide because it's all about me and I didn't write it and it just looked so cool. I gotta, I gotta get a copy of that. Okay. A quick story. My first year in college, I failed physics. I hated science, but I had to pass. My dad, who lived eight hours away from college, took it upon himself to order my physics textbook and tutor me over the landline phone for one hour every night. I passed that dreaded course with an A. It was such a memory that 33 years later, I still remember that feeling of success with having the right accommodation in place that allowed for my pace of reading, my questions answered, my, and having my dad as a cheerleader telling me I was smart enough to do it. Progress monitoring collects information on how and what methods to best support my students' learning needs. Progress monitoring drives individualized support for each learner to match their needs for the best outcomes. Progress monitoring tells me what works and what doesn't work with each student, so I can retry with new methods of engagement. And last of all, successful progress monitoring gives direction of how best to reach and teach a unique learner with rigorous science challenges to have the chance to earn results like I had in physics.
Thank you all for your presentations tonight. As we move into our discussion time, I'm just going to ask, I see a couple principals in the audience, if they could come up with their team for our discussion points, that would be great. And Chair Ellison, I'll turn over to you for questions.
Thank you. Directors, please hit your request to speak button for any questions, comments. Thank you, everybody, for this presentation and of hearing what's going on in our classrooms, how we're supporting students. Thank you. This was a very effective presentation. Thank you. Director Caprini.
I just want to say thank you so much for this information. You just, it's like peeling an onion. You just keep peeling it back and peeling it back and giving the information that is so incredibly important to me, I mean, to all of us, but I'm going to speak specifically me as a parent, you know, having two children who have graduated from MPS and remembering back in elementary school, not quite understanding what it meant for them to be at the level K in, in reading. Or being concerned about a staff member suggesting that they take some test to find out if they need to go to special ed or what have you. You literally have just given me so many lightbulb moments in this presentation. A principal from Southwest, I'm glad you came closer because I thought, what in the hell is ABC News' Anchorman doing here? I thought you were a reporter. I had my glasses on and I was like, okay, I gotta watch what I say because there's a reporter here. But I really applaud you and thank you for the story about physics because, you know, there's so much that we don't know about what children don't know unless we're able to dig deep in ourselves and think about what we didn't know and who was that inspirational person that was able to just kind of unlock that, that moment of, wow, I get it. And your dad did that for you and you're doing it for your students. And I almost started to cry a little bit when you talked about the last page of your presentation and I just really appreciated you sharing that. Shout out to all of you, but I want to give a special shout out to Henry Staff. Y'all are leaders, okay? You keep, every year, you know, there are things that you do in your school that literally, I believe, can be modeled throughout the district. And there are some things that literally have been taken and used here even at the Davis Center, that Associate Superintendent Abdullah and his assistant principal at the time created with site council. And you really, I'm so impressed with, with how you're teaching your class, your co-teaching class. And, and as you were talking about it, I wasn't literally seeing like desks and walls and, and computers. What I was seeing was like this whole nother atmosphere of, you know, you walk into a room and you literally are at home and you're with your family. And the way that you, you know, you, you, you get the children to understand, or students to, to see themselves in their work and, and support them and peeling that onion back, that those layers back. So I really wanted to say thank you for that. Burrows, I could say something about all of you, but I'll be brief. I had the pleasure of visiting your school and, you know, watching the students learning to read. And I think one of the classrooms was where there was a student that got up and moved around. And the teacher acknowledged that the student had gotten up and moved around the room, but then the teacher also said, but I see you still doing the work. And that touched my heart because that could have gone in any direction. And they invited them to come back to the carpet when they were ready. And they did eventually, when they were ready, and they were kept on, were doing the work. And so that was really special. Mung International, my heart. I used to be on site council there and there was, we were like 40 deep on site council, literally. The room was packed. We would make our own egg rolls before class, before site council started. And it's just really exciting to see the direction that the school is taking with, with your leadership, all of your, your leadership. And Lucy Laney, you, you're just around the corner from my house, so I always love you, love you all. And Pillsbury, thank you so much as well. I had to add that in because I just didn't want to leave you out. But you all did a wonderful job and I just really appreciate the information. I am going to miss these, these moments where you share this kind of information about what happens in our schools. And I hope you have the opportunity to really talk with parents about what it is that you're doing because I think if they, they're not going to sit through something like this, not all of them. But if you're able to give them something that they can connect with, I think that they would just be so much more relaxed and so much more knowledgeable about the hard work that you are actually doing. So, thank you. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Director Caprini. Associate Superintendent, sorry, interim superintendent. The principals that join their staff, can we meet them? Could you introduce them to us?
Yes, absolutely. As I'm looking around, let's see, I see someone added to the Patrick Henry team.
Hi, I'm Josh Poole. And, it doesn't work. Oh, hi, I'm Josh Poole and I am the admin to S.A., supporting special education, EL, and 9th grade.
Thank you for being here. HIA, I see our principal and AP.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kate McNulty, I'm the assistant principal at HIA.
And our principal at Southwest, oh, I'm sorry, Gao.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gao Chong. I'm the principal at Mung International.
Thank you, Gao.
Hello, I'm Ed Bennett. I'm the principal at Southwest.
And our AP at Burrows.
Hi, Mary Adama Lee, AP at Burrows.
Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I'll be brief, I just have a quick comment. I'm a social worker and so that means we're, social workers are systems thinkers and we believe in connecting the whole person to the system, to the individual, to the system around them. So I appreciate the comments here tonight that, and I particularly appreciate the, just the integration tonight of academics and school climate and all the goals and the variety of topics here tonight. But I specifically want to just, just address here, meet the ask to address housing and our Rais U one in that category as well. Specifically, I just want to call out, it's very timely that you mentioned that. First, I want to just call out that the stable homes and stable schools does feel like common sense, that we do need to address housing in order for students to succeed. And yet, it is really unprecedented and it's fairly new and it takes a fair amount of resources from the city. So I do appreciate the mayor and the city council to make that happen. And we'll make the connection that the budget planning for the city is happening at this very moment, this month. And we are all citizens of Minneapolis, so that's something that we, as citizens, can be watching and advocating for as well and be hopeful and encouraging for those resources to continue because it is really important. Second, I just want to point to the legislative agenda for this school board, which we just presented last month, and point out that we are proposing funding for transportation for the McKinney-Vento Act. And specifically, really think it's important to highlight a challenge that we're facing, that we do not have anywhere near enough resources. We're not receiving anywhere near the amount of resources it actually takes for us to transport our students and meet our obligations with the McKinney-Vento Act. And in particular, want to highlight a kind of a flaw in policy that we are advocating and suggesting all the citizens in Minnesota advocate with us. And this flaw, that means that about one-third of the schools, which districts, including Minneapolis Public Schools, are reimbursed at a much lower rate than two-thirds of the schools. So we are specifically putting on our legislative agenda and would ask for everyone's assistance in correcting that flaw so that we can receive full reimbursement for transporting our homeless and highly mobile students, our fragile students who do need to have some consistency in their school and something that I think I'm confident that the rest of this board agrees and it sounds like everybody in this room agrees. So you can join us in advocating for our legislative agenda. So again, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Director Arneson. Director Jordan, are you?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just really quickly, except on some of us. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I thought that the special education slide was really well done and the work that went through it. You know, I've been a longtime parent of this district since 2004 and I've had a couple children with IEPs and along the way. And it's always been very, the work that goes into it and the very thoughtful planning, whether, you know, it was my son at Longfellow, I don't know if anyone's been here that long, but the work that, that went through and the planning that goes through it, yes, it adjusts with the times, but the work that I have seen firsthand as a parent really speaks volumes to the work that you all folks. I have seen firsthand as a parent really speaks volumes to the work that you all folks, you folks all do, really, really, really do. Whether you are developing an IAP, whether you're a social worker, or you're co-teaching, which I've also seen firsthand, albeit not at Henry, but elsewhere, and it is a model that works with our students as well. And so, one thing I had, one question I had really quickly was, you know, as a parent, as a parent of color, predominantly the people that develop your IAPs are predominantly white. Social workers, white, and the staffers, and it's white. So there's, sometimes there is a level of intimidation that, you know, you just feel, or not, I shouldn't say intimidation, but something along those lines. And one thing I've always thought of was, you know, do we, is there something that we can do to provide, I don't know, support for, for a parent in that situation? I know we've talked about it before, but is that just something that we still offer to parents and say, you know, if you, if it's a little over, because it is overwhelming, you know, even, even if I'm still up here, I still find it intimidating as a parent. Seriously, I really do. I just went through one this past fall, and I still found myself kind of triggered, going back to 2004, I was just like, wow, something's never changed, you know? And, and so, do we still offer our parents the opportunity to say, hey, you know, if you're feeling overwhelmed, we do have, we can call someone, whether it's Indian Ed or whatever, and have someone come sit with you and explain in more in depth? I mean, I'm sure we still do that, we do have that option still? I mean, that's the only question I had, do we still offer that?
Yeah, Director Jordan, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to Team Henry and Team HIA to give maybe an example at each of their sites, so that you think about that while I share just a little bit about, I think the supports, especially through the special education department, provides many supports, is our directors and our district program facilitators, so I see many friendly faces in the audience of support families through the process if needed. I think another shout out to our Special Education Advisory Council, who does a lot of parent-to-parent support, and so appreciate the work that our leadership of that Special Education Advisory Council does too. Liza, someone on your team want to talk a little bit about example for you?
Yeah, I can start, and then I'm going to pass it to Mr. Poole and see if Ms. Bremseth wants to add anything, but I think we have had situations where we've asked special ed, or we've asked another department to come and support. Indian Ed is one of the ones who's come to support and asked those questions. I do think it's oftentimes a challenge for us as a school. Last year in our second budget tie-out, we did actually have to cut our, our Spanish and Somali family liaison, and so it has been a bigger challenge for us this year. And so, but there are times where we do reach out, or we do ask family members to do that or take that time and do the prep work. I think a lot of it goes to the relationship piece that you heard from Southwest, is that our case managers work really hard to have strong relationships with our students and our families before that IAP meeting, so they do have that strong relationship, so it is less, it's less intimidating, and our social workers do the same. And we have a really, really strong special ed and social work department at Henry, which does a lot of that lifting for us. Laura, do you have anything you want to add? I know you're part of that.
I mean, I guess I think, I mean, you are identifying a, a loss that we have in our school system, is that we do not have enough teachers that look like our families and our students, and don't have their same lived experiences, which is a huge problem. And so I think this is just a call for everyone in this space, especially educators, like how can we, how can we invite and encourage and uplift educators of color into our spaces so that we don't have to reach outside of our school communities to get that support and have that representation in our meetings at all times? Like, that's so important. So I think, I appreciate you for bringing that up.
The special ed department is always kind of putting things out to the all schools, giving us new information and ways to help build those connections. They did, like, last year, two years ago, they did a pretty good job. They sent out different kind of pieces about how to make sure that you're celebrating our students' cultures and making sure that that's celebrated in IEP meetings. And, and so, we, you know, in the school I was working at at the time, we spent a lot of time trying to do that, and we saw results where, you know, families felt a lot more comfortable. So that's a piece that's great, you know, always, you know, we always try to make sure that, you know, we, we ask families, like, you want an advocate to be there, you know, PACER, there's all these, there's, there's organizations that we try to include. But yeah, that's, the big piece is, is building those good relationships with families, and, you know, families and students first, right? And so making sure that the time, the times work for them, and the spaces are comfortable, right? So we're, we're always thinking about those things.
Director Jordan, thank you for your question. At HIA, we are fortunate to have a staff that is diverse and is pretty much representative of the students that we serve, and we have collaborated with Indian Ed and, as well as PACER advocates. And I would echo some of the sentiments that have already been mentioned, and that is just, really, we have tried to focus on building relationships with families so that they do feel comfortable having conversations with staff who look different from them, because we know that those relationships are going to be ongoing throughout the year, and that we may not always be able to fall back on other partnerships. And so really, our key priority is focusing on making sure that all the families we work with, that we have really strong relationships with them, and that they feel comfortable coming into the school and reaching out for anything. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for, for clarifying that so publicly, so people who are watching know that we are offering these, because I think sometimes people aren't aware of that. And even, like I said, even though I'm aware of it, I'm just like, oh, okay, I can do it, and then I'm finding myself being intimidated when I know I shouldn't be, but that's just how it is. But I'm very glad we are able to talk about it in this space, like I said. Now, people are watching, or will watch this later on, will say, oh, good to know that this school does it, or every school has some type of, of thing in place where our families of color don't feel those, you know, things of, of that nature, and I really sincerely appreciate that. That's really good. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Fearing for what you had spoken earlier about Native American Month and, and whatnot. It's really, I, I find that very important, and, and the recognition that, that you brought to speak so eloquently and passionately, you know? So, so thank you very much, and I'm done.
Thank you. Director Sorio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. This is very inspirational, and it brings me into a, a different space of being hopeful. And I just wanted to mention also to the principals, to take the opportunity to learn from each other and see what is working in other schools, because I don't know if you have the opportunity to be together, or just to pick up the phone and reach out for help as well. I wanted to praise the principal of Lucy Laney for actually speaking up and saying that you need help. I do appreciate that, because it shows your bravery, and also that you do care, because we need to be brave, and also to be advocating for our students. So thank you. And also the fact that, thank you for, for the work, especially special education and ELL education, just in our district alone, it is $68 million that we don't receive annually. In going back to Director Arneson's point, it is a moment now that we unite. It is now or never that we do get the funding that our children deserve. So thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you, Director Sorio. And, and thank you, Director Sorio and Director Arneson, for tying in, connecting our legislative agenda with what's going on in our schools that we're hearing about tonight. I want to thank everybody, no one else in the queue, Director Ali.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I want to say to you, thank you very much, each and every one of you. Thank you very much for making the difference every day in our children's education. May God bless you. I wish you have a happy holiday. Thank you very much. I'm done, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Ali. Yes, yes.
So tonight is about hope. You know, as I look at all of you out in front of me, it, no matter what job you hold at MPS, there is a lot of happy times, there's a lot of tears, there's a lot of challenges, there's a lot of celebration. You bring out the best in all of us, and so I just want to thank you for taking time out tonight to be here, to share our story, because I think that's really important for us, to share our story. And you got into some deep details, right? But that's important for people to see. It's easy to give surface answers, and I think that's what we've really tried to be transparent about this year, is to show the work, because you are doing the work. I'm really hopeful, I think we will see some nice January fast results, so I just appreciate each and every one of you tonight, and thank you to the board for your intention and, and positive comments, it's just, it's much appreciated. Encouragement is really helpful, especially this time of year, right? We're getting into that, see, right? We love the encouragement, so thank you all again.
Yes, thank you. I do want to thank everybody for the very informative celebratory information that you shared with us tonight. So thank you. Before we adjourn, I want to make just a couple of notes. Our superintendent's search special meeting for December 6th has been canceled, as we work to schedule community listening sessions. So keep an eye out, those are going to be happening soon, and they're going to be posted on our website, and we're going to be sharing them with everybody. Our next meeting will be our regular business meeting on December 13th. That meeting will also serve as the truth and taxation meeting, as we will vote on a property tax levy that night. Because of this, that meeting cannot start until 6 o'clock, which is half an hour later than we usually start. Any questions? Without objection, I will now adjourn this meeting. Good night, everyone, thank you.